Shaner? Here. Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Please stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. (pause) (inaudible) to rely on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to interviews for the wastewater treatment plant reconstruction and design advisory committee. Mark, you're here. Come up, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I believe I've got a unique skill set that I could bring to this committee. I was in construction for a couple of decades, building lift stations, pipelines. From there, I moved into machine maintenance, doing sanitary systems for Tyson, which was IBP then, Smithfield Foods. Worked on the instrumentation. And I just, a few months back, actually retired from the Sioux City wastewater treatment plant. I was there approximately 10 and 1/2 years. So I've got kind of an intimate knowledge of what works right and what works wrong there, and have seen the processes that could have been addressed a little better and things that have actually worked very well. And I kind of keep up with the, all the new regulations that, like next month, you know, we've got new EPA guidelines and NPDES permits that we'll be starting. Been kind of keeping abreast of the EPA's Plan 15 agenda where, you know, you're going to do new nutrient study, or expand on the nutrient studies coming up, and PFAS and items like that. So it's, I've worked with vendors. I also worked with Iowa Water Environmental Association, IOE of Region 3. I was a board member there. We'd put two conferences on a year. So I worked closely with vendors and getting people in to do different studies that they would, well, we would bring in different wastewater operators from around the area and just have like a one or two day conference.
Questions?
No questions here.
Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate it. Nice to see that you're willing to come back.
Matt Hoffman.
Hello, I'm Matt. I have the exact opposite of a very specific skill set.
Yeah.
But no, I think when I heard this committee was getting put together, I thought, you know, there needs to be representation for what I like to call "normal" people, and I think that would be me. Cindy and I rent our home here at 24 Jones Street, and we talk to all kinds of different folks who are going to be impacted by this. Same with the businesses, talk to the chamber on a regular basis. And obviously, I've followed their coverage, our coverage, quite closely, but I actually haven't been involved with it very much myself. I know there is, I guess, a one committee rule, but I didn't know that at the time. I'd already filled it out, so I figured, send it in. But if needed, I'm happy to resign from the other one, or either way, it sounds like we got some great folks who will be served, resonate swell no matter what.
Okay, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Application, Mayor.
Dale McKinney.
Hi, Dale McKinney, retired architect. My last project here in town was the Seaboard Triumph Expo Center. Been retired for a couple of years, kind of kept my head down and stayed at home. I think it's time to give back, in addition to almost 45 years of practice of architecture, all here in town. Back in, I think, the late '70s, early '80s, worked for DGR in an architectural role and did some design work on a few wastewater plants back at that time. So interested in giving back to the community.
Thanks for applying, Dale.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda, which today is 3 through 19H. Consider the items passed unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is asked for by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come as I read that item. Again, I want you to state your name and address for the record. You'll be limited to three minutes, your comments, and we'll, under citizen concerns, anything that's not on the agenda, you can bring it up there. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Reading of the city council minutes of May 17th and 22nd. I think I missed one of those meetings. Which one was the Monday? I think I missed the 22nd, didn't I? I'll abstain on the 22nd. Four is a resolution, rescinding Resolution 87-13-5888 concerning the adoption of a uniform large water meter installation policy. Five is a resolution, rescinding Resolution Number S40592 concerning the policy for assessment of unpaid utility bills incurred by lesses. Explain this one to me again, because you're not asking the landlord to be responsible, are you?
No.
That isn't real fair, I wanted to make sure. Okay, six is a resolution supporting the submission of an IEDA application for workforce housing tax credit program by Koskovich and Murphy Developments. Seven is a resolution to temporarily closing various city streets on July 21st through the 23rd for rack ride. Eight is a resolution assessing a $500 penalty against PG Mini-Mart 800 Hamilton Boulevard for violation of the beer, wine, and liquor laws. Nine, a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Hamilton Boulevard storm sewer replacement project. Ten is a resolution inviting proposals to lease land in the Donner Park urban renewal area, announcing an intent to accept the proposal of Hawkeye Rifle and Pistol Club, and scheduling a hearing, 6611 Allison Avenue. Eleven are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing an application with the US DOT under the charging and fueling infrastructure discretionary grant opportunity. B is a resolution authorizing Parks and Rec to accept a MIR target grant for the Cone Mountain Bike Development Project. C is a resolution scheduling a hearing regarding the activities related to the CDBG-CV contract with the IEDA. Twelve are actions relating to bonds. A is a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation urban renewal bonds Series 2023A. B is a resolution authorizing the issuance of taxable general obligation bond Series 2023B. Thirteen are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending the position classification manual by adopting an updated job description for the utility superintendent. B is a resolution amending the position classification manual by adopting an updated job description for the engineering inspector. C is a resolution approving a personnel manual and salary schedule for fire supervisor employees. D is a resolution approving a collecting bargaining agreement and salary schedule with the transit union. Fourteen are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract for transportation services with the City of Sergeant Bluff. B is a resolution approving addendum number one to the service provider agreement with geotech engineering and testing for UST removal of, at 529 Pierce Street. C is a resolution approving a change orders numbers one and two to the contract with Holstein Escavating for the Floyd Interceptor Emergency Sanitary Sewer Project. D is a resolution approving a donation agreement with the Sioux City Parks and Rec Foundation for use of the Big Sioux Pedestrian Bridge and Trail Project. E is a resolution authorizing amendment number three to the health reimbursement arrangement plan with Gallagher Benefit Services. F1 is a resolution approving work order number 63 with RSNH Iowa for the airport terminal apron pavement project. F2 is a resolution approving work order number 62 with RSNH Iowa for the Northeast Taxi Lane Reconstruction Project at the airport. Fifteen are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to Granite Inliner for the Outer Drive Bridge sanitary sewer lining project. B is a resolution authorizing payment to Western Specialty Contractors for the United Center Parking Ramp Repair Project. C is a resolution approving a partial settlement of a torque claim and authorizing payment. Purchasing, 16A, resolution awarding a PO divert gurney for various materials to repair the Zenith High Service Pump Number One. B is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase wastewater treatment plant property insurance from Millshell Hammer Pits. Seventeen's an application for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. Eighteen's applications for beer and liquor license. Nineteen, boards commission, committee minutes. Anyone to be seen or heard, I'm sorry, to be heard on any of those items? 20's a hearing and ordinance vacating the east-west alley that runs through 1671 Lacy Boulevard. The petitioner, Sal. P&amp;Z recommends approve the item. I'll move it. Second. Hearing's now open. Mr. Gleiser, do you have anything for the good of the order?
We approved the east-west vacation, not north-south.
Okay. Anyone to be heard? Hearing's now closed. Passes 5-0, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? I'll move that. Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
I'll move second, third. Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. 21's a hearing and ordinance rezoning 1510, 1514, and 1518 Pacific Street, from zone classification NC dot four to GI. Petitioner Koskovich, P&amp;Z recommends approve the item. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open. Go ahead.
It's putting up another building very similar to the one they have just to the, kind of, north of it. Good use of it.
South. South of it.
Okay.
Well, they're moving dirt south of it, and they don't own the ground north, I don't think, because that's...
Right, right. It's similar to the building to the north of where we're...
Right. Oh, to the north, yep, yep, yep. Anyone to be heard? Passes 5-0, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that. Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
I'll move second and third. Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okay, now we've got to vote. Pull that up. Are we...
No, I just called it.
Oh, you called it.
Yep.
Okay. 22's a hearing and ordinance rezoning various streets from zone classification PI to GR. Petitioner Koskovich, P&amp;Z recommends approval of the item. I'll move it. Second. Hearing's now open. Anyone? You guys have this?
For...
I don't know.
...middle street?
They recommended... Recommended approval. You recommended it, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
1114 West 27th Street. That's the old Crescent Park School sign.
Yep.
Anyone to be heard? Hearing's now closed. Passes 5-0, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that. Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
I'll move second and third. Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
I'll move second and third. Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okay, now we've got to vote. Pull that up. Are we...
No, I just called it.
Oh, you called it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
22's a hearing and ordinance rezoning various streets from zone classification PI to GR. Petitioner Koskovich, P&amp;Z recommends approval of the item. I'll move it. Second. Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Yeah, come on. Mr. Gleiser, I'm curious. You guys spend a lot of our hard-earned tax dollars, not you. You weren't there at the time, I don't think, with this planning, great overall planning thing. I see Mr. Hanson back there. I'm glad he's here today. And it was supposed to solve all these sign problems, and ever since that, three years ago, that we deal with sign problems more than we deal with anything else. When are we going to finally have these sign issues behind us?
Well, I think...
Come on up the mic, somebody.
Recently, some of the technology changes with LED signs have created some issues, and we're hoping to resolve that with this.
We won't see a sign ordinance change time now?
I didn't say that.
I didn't think you would. Go ahead, name and address, please.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Good evening. My name is Don Avjean. I'm with Verdi Outdoor Advertising, part of the Sign Division. 2420 Crextonville Road, here in town. I just want to introduce myself. We recently purchased the outdoor company in town a little over a year ago, and we're looking to do some additional investments in the town and in reading the ordinance that is about to happen or could happen. I've had 50 years of experience in this industry. I've gone through a lot of different variances around the country, from New York City to Los Angeles, and now here. And we just wanted to offer our expertise while it's being drafted, if we can put into it, because we have made a large investment. We've got a large building in town. We are planning on building a new building and moving, and continuing to operate and employ people, and give our services to the community, both professionally and also with the community and helping out the community. So I, I'm not here to object, I'm just here to listen and find out what we can do to help you out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else be heard?
How you guys doing? David English, 2420 Crextonville Road with Verdi. I'm the new general manager there, and I just want to echo what Don said. I mean, we definitely want to, you know, be a part of and provide our expertise in the industry. For the last 20 years, I've ran a privately-held company down in Kansas City, and I'm excited to get to work up here with Verdi, doing a lot of the really good things we did down there. And definitely want to just be involved, be a part of it, and, you know, make sure we're, you know, included with everything that goes on. So, that, thank you.
Yeah.
And I think we welcome your input and your 50 years of experience. Appreciate that.
So with that, I'll ask the question, Mr. Dority. This is your deal. What is the process now? Or, Chris, I don't know, but I don't want, I don't want this to come back in six months and alls we hear is, you guys dreamt it up, you ran it through P&amp;Z, and you didn't communicate with the industry. So what assurances do we have that that will not happen?
Chris Mattson, planner, correct. We do have six months to develop an ordinance or before then. If we bring something forward before council, then we could essentially remand this moratorium before that point as well. But no, our intent is to do the research in what other cities are doing, present probably multiple times, back to the planning zoning commission, to the city council, let you know where we're at in that review, and then bring those changes forward.
And invite the stakeholders?
Yes.
I think it makes sense to, of course, meet with these folks and understand with some of the changes in electronic signs and those kinds of things, to understand where the industry's going and what makes sense for Sioux City. And we really plan on taking, may not take a full six months, but we want to take enough time to be reasonable and fair about the whole thing, and look at the options and what, as Chris said, is what some other cities are doing. And I, we don't think wholesale change is here, but we think maybe there's some common sense things we could do to improve our ordinance.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's important to always reflect and see where we can improve. And obviously, you need to change with the times, and so we want to make sure that we have updated ordinances and that they reflect some of the changes in markets and what other communities are doing, because sometimes I think there are ways that we can improve on what we have. I would echo the sentiment, though, I want to make sure if at those, if you did one at the onset and maybe one after your findings, or something more of an open house or a public meeting, where you did invite people and at least give them multiple opportunities for input. Obviously, experts, you know, we know who we can maybe reach out to, but perhaps there were others that wouldn't have input, or even just citizens. Like Matt there is, you know, a normal guy, he might want to be there, so that could be a good opportunity for just some other input, too. So as long as we...
Sure.
I think there's great opportunity to improve.
I'm kind of on an equal enforcement of the law deal today, as the city clerk and city attorney will tell you about later, I'm sure. But it bothers me that a business can ask to flash that sign every, it can only flash eight seconds. Got to stay up for eight seconds, right? That's your ordinance.
That's what the DOT says on the interstate. We don't have an ordinance for digital billboards currently.
Well, now, that's news to me, because when Mr. Hanson was here, he told me that was the rule. That's not really the rule.
On-premise signs cannot flash, correct. But off-premise signs, we don't have any rules.
No, on-premise time.
On-premise, yeah.
I just, I wanted to tell you where I'm coming from. So on my business, if I don't have one, but if I did, I could, I have to let it go eight seconds. Right? I mean, it's got to be up to eight seconds before it can flash. Yes, it does.
I didn't think it'd have any flashing sign if it was on-premise.
I'm talking change of message, change in the message.
I don't recall if there's a timeframe other than just not flashing. I'd have to double-check.
Well, how did the school, how does the school get, how do churches get away with it when they say, "Service time 10:30, Wednesday night"? How do they do that, then? They're changing their message.
Am I understanding the code currently is just that it cannot actually strobe or flash, but I'll double-check and get back...
Forget the spike.
Yeah.
They changed the message.
Like if something...
Yeah.
I know what you mean.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
But that goes along with this technology change. Perhaps our ordinance was only on, off, on, off, on, off, but now you're saying nine o'clock, and then it goes down, and it says something different. I understand what you're saying, Mayor, but I think when the ordinance was written, it was more like an on, off, a neon sign, or something like that.
Correct.
Like flashing, but you're talking about the words are changing, which didn't used to happen. I know what you mean. It's hard to describe it.
But doesn't that have to stay up for a certain length of time?
My understanding is the code currently just says it can't flash. There's no restriction on how long a message can...
Okay. Okay.
We're here today talking about off-premise signs, but you're asking about on-premise. We can look into that.
If there, if there is no time limit that it has to stay up, then I'm wrong, but that's not what I've been told around here 50 times, so I guess I'm wrong.
We can get you an answer on that, Mayor.
Because my reasoning is, businesses have to do it one way, but the schools do it however the heck they want to. That's what my point is. So we have unequal enforcement of our rules, if those are the rules.
It'd be the same.
Okay. Okay. Hearing's closed. We're doing a hearing.
Yes, it is.
Passes 5-0, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule on this? I'll move it. Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Second and third. Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Second and third. Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Second and third. Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Second and third. Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Second and third. Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Second and third. Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0, 25's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specification for the construction of the Al Haynes Drive Water Main Extension Project. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0, 27's a hearing and resolution rescinding to the request of the Suland Initiative to annex 7720 Allison Avenue into the city. I'll move that. Second. Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Take?
Yes.
Takes a while. Passes 5-0. Patience. 28's a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to grant an underground electric easement at 4400 West 19th Street to Mid-America Energy for mutual benefits. I'll move that. Second. Public hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Yes.
Takes a while.
Pass is five zero.
Patience.
28 is a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to grant an underground electric easement at 4400 West 19th Street to Mid-America Energy for mutual benefits. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Pass is five zero. 29 is a hearing and resolution approving a temporary easement on vacated Indiana Avenue, abutting 2503 Indiana Avenue. The petitioners will, I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? That will be back on next week. 34 is a resolution amending resolution number 2022 dash 0426 relating to the demolition of 211 21st Street by authorizing a 90-day delay in demolition. I'll move that.
Second.
Daryl Bullock, Inspection Services Manager. This is one of the properties that the structure needed to be saved. Unfortunately, there was a, a death at that facility. It took some time for the banks to get their hands on it. They do have that now. We have the bond and everything in place for that property, and staff would support
Pass is five zero. 35 is a resolution amending resolution 2023 dash 0056 relating to the demolition of 1615 West 16th Street by authorizing a 90-day delay in demolition. I'll move that.
Second.
Same thing on this property. There's a new owner on this property. The new owner has wished to make the repairs on the structure, has brought in his bond requirements and estimates of repairs, and staff would recommend a stay of demolition for this one as well.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Daryl for all of his hard work over the many, many years of inspections. A lot has come to light. I hope you're getting some thank yous from the community. Dolly Butts in the Sioux City Journal wrote an excellent article yesterday that appeared. I liked your quotes. You said you focus and, and your concern is on health and safety, and that's key. And, and also, the other key is beware of your surroundings. I'm so glad you pointed that out for all of us to be aware of what our surroundings are, and if there's something that looks wrong, report it.
Report it.
Doesn't cost anything to report it. Report it to the landlord. If the landlord doesn't do anything, call the inspections department, and safety is your primary concern. I just want to thank you, because I know it's a tough job. I mean, the calls we get, and the mayor gets most of them, but whenever you inspect and you're going to, oh, the other comment you made in the Sioux City Journal yesterday was that if there is safety at issue, you'll red-tag it immediately. You don't wait. And I, and I think people are starting to understand that, and you've.
That's a very hard choice to make, but.
It is, it's a tough choice, and you said you don't take it lightly, and we don't either.
Nope.
None of us up here take that lightly, because you're dealing with people's livelihood, that kind of thing, but.
I, I do appreciate council support at the Placard hearings, too. That means a lot.
But I just, I want to thank you. I, I think you deserve a round of thanks, and, and thanks for interviewing with the Sioux City Journal. I think you did a great job. Pass is five zero. 36 is a resolution approving a 2080 agreement with Dakota Dunes Community Improvement District regarding financial participation in the construction of the Big Sioux River Pedestrian Bridge Crossing Project. I'll move that. This is a great project. I'm glad it's coming together.
Right. Long time to come in.
Yeah, it's been years. And for those of you that participated and had some input on it, thank you very much for putting this together. I think it's going to be a win-win. Pass is five zero. I would agree and thank the Dakota Dunes Board for, it's been a long time trying to convince them of this, but not only are they convinced of it, but they're participating with resources, so thank you for that as well. 37 is a resolution awarding a city's facility solid waste and recycling collection and disposal agreement to Gil Holling for waste and recycling pickup at the city facilities commencing July 1, 2023, and ending June 1, June 30, 2026. I'll move that.
Second. I just have one question on this one, Mr. Padmore. I think in the write-up, there was some discussion about charging the various departments, or allocating. Hi there.
Hi, Aramonting Environmental.
We're going to defer this.
Allocating.
Oh.
We are deferring this?
Yeah, we're deferring it, but go ahead and.
Well, my question is just allocation of the, the cost, because if, if my math was correct, it's about $3,000 a year, and I'm just wondering if, if that's going to be more work to do the allocation for the departments. I mean, how, I'm not sure how that would work.
That I don't know. I'd have to look into that.
Okay. Well, there might be time now. I didn't realize we're going to.
We are deferring this till next week, too, or we requested a deferment. Since Gil couldn't be here, we thought you might have some questions on it.
Sean wanted to come.
Okay.
Be present.
That's, that's internal for, I think, the city manager.
Yeah, and I'll check on that.
Yeah.
Did we reach out to any of the other companies to find out why they wouldn't entertain a bid?
Again, I'd, I would have to check on that. I inherited this when I came on in March. I do know other bids went out, but I did not hear why they did not respond. I'm guessing it's because Gil has the landfill here, so they would either have to pay Gil to take the waste for them, or haul the waste out of our city limits.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, but I'll move to defer this item until June 12.
I'll second that.
Thanks.
I'll call that, then. O'Kane.
Aye.
Janer.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Citizen Concerns. Please come up, state your name and address for the record. You're a citizen today?
Both. Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. I understand there's some citizens in the audience that may want to discuss the climbing wall. There's lots of conversations that have happened over the last week, and I think all the conclusions are, we would not like to see a lapse in services of the climbing wall. So, in order for those discussions to continue, I would like to recommend a two-to-three-month extension with Whitewater under the same terms, so that we can continue the conversations. And I believe Whitewater has some ideas that would reduce the city's investment into the climbing wall, so we would like to see those ideas come to fruition. So, that is my recommendation, and I, there might be a few more folks that want to speak on this topic.
That, just something.
Everybody, just so everybody understands, we can't vote on items not on the agenda.
Right.
Contract, well, if we, contracts, at that rate, is under the city manager's authority, but you probably still have to vote to extend, I would guess.
Correct, and I believe the existing contract, I'm not sure if it had an automatic extension.
Did it not?
It did not, so we'll have to take a look at the contract language.
Okay. Okay. Just so we know, that we're not doing anything today, other than listening to your recommendation. I want to.
Correct.
But there was never an intent to close it and to make the climbing wall non-existent. I just really want everybody to know that. Correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Can this be on the agenda for next week?
I have to look at the contract language.
The contract is, expires June 30?
It does, and without an automatic provision, it could fall under BOP's authority to extend it for under a year.
My understanding, it falls under my authority.
Next week than the following week?
Yes. Prior to the expiration, at any rate.
Thank you. Anyone to be heard?
Yep, someone's coming up. Are you Alex?
Hi, I'm Alex. Firstly, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm sure you guys kind of know who I am now. I am Alex Irwin. I manage the climbing gym in town. First off, want to kind of apologize. I think there was kind of some miscommunication last week. It's been quite the whirlwind. Honestly, I feel like I was a little left in the dark with things, so when we kind of found out, the first time I heard about the potential to close, was literally within a week and two days. I've been doing my best the last year to pour my heart and soul into this gym, and I really think it's an asset for the city. So, yes, I understand that there wasn't an intention to close a gym, but in our eyes, there was an intention to close it in its current form, which I think was the confusion. And I think there was a mention of starting some sort of new iteration of the gym, more of a private sort of gym, and it's, yeah, a co-op is what that would be, but I'm here today to propose a continuation of what we already have, and to propose that rather than the city paying the post agreed upon 100K, we would like to propose, if we meet in the middle, perhaps the city can pay half of that, and then we will do our best to fundraise in the meantime, if we can hopefully get a little bit of an extension, because 30 days is a little rough. And we will fundraise and find sponsors, sponsorship to keep it in its current form, because I really, I really believe that having it open to the community, just wide open for everybody, is very good for Sioux City. It's very unique. There's not a climbing gym like this in the Midwest, and maybe nationally. I don't know if you guys have all been there. I'm obviously passionate about it, but I think it's a really special thing for the general public. We have a lot of people here today that are from the climbing gym, that are advocates for it. You heard a lot of quick feedback, though potentially misinformed. There was a lot of community uprising, and I think that speaks loudly to the fact that I think the community wants it to survive in its current form. And we just kind of wanted to reach out to you and see your thoughts. We would love to meet in the middle. I don't want to see it shut down in the way that it's been pushed for many years. I truly believe that one year is not quite enough for us to grow in the ways that we would like to. Honestly, I feel like we're just getting things kicked off, getting things established. It was still experimental, in a sense, our first year. I have high hopes for the next year. If you would just consider meeting us in the middle, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, it's great to see everybody. Randy Giles, 33676 South Ridge Road, Sioux City, Iowa. Just here, because we have July 4 coming up, and I just wanted, we've done such great work to publicize when you can and when you cannot set off fireworks, so I was just wanting to hopefully get the same action items that we put forward over last year, which was to run the PSAs, and also, I'm happy to help in any way I can to execute these in any sort of way, but to run the PSAs again, put a notice in the water bills. Hopefully, the police department is going to be handing out warnings again. I wish they were violations, but warnings are good. We, we got there. And I know right now, at this point, it is requesting vendors post a sign in their shop as to when they are allowed to set off fireworks. Obviously, I think it's something that they should do. It is the law, and on cigarette boxes, it says the law, and everywhere else, it says the law, and alcohol and all that, so I do think vendors should be instructed to post a sign, but if, at least, we could request that. And I just want us to continue to reconsider fireworks for New Year's Eve. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one thing that I would just comment, and I guess I was just thinking about it while you were talking about some of the recommendations, or maybe refreshing my memory about some of the recommendations. But really, I wonder, and there's no way to probably police this, or to make sure we do checks, but I don't know, you would honestly just hope that they would do the right thing, is, I wonder if it would be more effective, instead of in every water bill going out, or things like that, if, if they're going to be printed at that level, I wonder if you distributed them to the people that are vending them, and with every sale, they'd have to be handed that slip of paper, rather than one going in every single mailbox? Like, I'm not buying any fireworks.
Right.
I don't need to receive.
To the consumers directly.
What your notice is.
Agreed.
I mean, you're just going then to the people that are actually purchasing, and just say, look.
Yep.
With any purchase, every person needs to be handed this, but again, I don't know if we can, if we can enforce that. I mean, I'm just thinking, that's who is going to be using them, and they should know the guidelines when they're purchasing them.
100%.
Sometimes, if you print an eight-by-eleven sign next to a 20-foot-by-10 sign that says fireworks.
Gets lost.
Yeah, you might not see that, so.
I think that's a brilliant idea, to get it straight into the consumer's hands, and again, I'd be more than happy to pick up some and distribute it to the vendors. It'd be, obviously, great if the city said, we really would like you to throw these into their shopping bags when they buy. That, I think, would be more effective than the water bills as well, because I won't be purchasing any either.
Randy, you worked, you worked hard on that, as did Mark, and, and I think part of the background for the water billing is you want the neighbors to also know what the rules are.
Ah, right.
If you just do it to the users.
Right.
Then, because this is kind of a complaint-based.
Right.
Well, it is.
Let's do both.
Yeah, there you go.
You want everyone to know what, what the rules are.
Yeah, that's true. I forgot about that. That's a good point.
But maybe both could.
Yeah, both would be phenomenal.
But you both have done a lot of hard work the past few years, and I think we're making some progress. It's, it's always going to be tough.
Thank you. I know. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. You've been great. Everybody has, really. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eli Meiselman. I live at 2817 Sunset Circle. I just recently moved to Sioux City. I'm a veteran with PTSD, hence my service dog right here. Originally, I'm from Israel. I served in the Israeli army. I served through war. And the reason I moved from Israel, I actually moved to Canada before I could move to the US, was because of the government and the way they treat veterans, especially veterans with PTSD. I couldn't deal with sounds of fireworks, or bombings, or missiles, or anything like that, and in Israel, that's thing, that's something that is usual. That is one, my number-one trigger, and I'm here to talk on behalf of all veterans with PTSD, or all people with PTSD that are related to, or triggered by fireworks, or explosions, even sirens. And I remember even when I lived in Canada for 10 years, every Canada Day, which is the Independence Day, I asked my neighbors to not lit fireworks, just because I'm a veteran with PTSD, and it bothers me in a way that I can't explain. And in Canada, they don't treat veterans like they do here, and that's one of the reasons why, why I moved to the US, because here, we respect veterans. So, it's really hard for us, for me, to come and speak here, because public is not my favorite space, and, but on the other hand, it's so important for me. I can emphasize how hard it is to hear fireworks, or bombing noise, when you're not prepared for it. I know that every first Monday, when there are sirens, I need to go and hide somewhere in order not to hear them, and I do so. When it's 4th of July, I know to do so, but when somebody lets fireworks unannounced or replaced, that it's not legal, I can't express how horrible that makes me feel, and I know that there's so many people out there that make, that they feel the same, and they don't have the abilities or the capabilities to come here and speak in front of you. Even though it's really hard, it's something that I really, really want to emphasize, and I'm really thankful, and even though I'm new to Sioux City, I'm really thankful for Randy, for everything that you've done, and I just wanted to express that, so you would know that there are people out there that maybe cannot come here and speak, but that this thing affects us immensely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Coming in.
Anyone else be heard today?
My name is Mark Solheim. I live at 2909 Garrettson Avenue. I originally came to talk about the ordinance, about employees living within the city limits, but since these folks have come up, I think I ought to throw in my two cents. I want to thank this gentleman for stepping forward and talking about his experiences with PTSD, and the pain that he suffers from the fireworks. It is difficult to get people to come up and, and talk about it, because they have to admit that they are not supermen, that they do suffer from these things, and I really wish there was something we could do about it. I understand that 4th of July is, you know, it's patriotic, and it's a thing that, that we've always done in our lives, shooting off fireworks on the 4th of July, although for the last 80 years, it wasn't allowed in Sioux City.
Legally allowed.
Legally. I mean, yeah, you're, you're right. It wasn't legally allowed. It did happen, but those people were criminals, and we don't let criminals run our, our, our To your point, Mr. Moore, about the flyers in the, in the water bills, we want people to know what the rules and regulations are of fireworks in the city, whether they buy fireworks or not. If, you know, it's a week before the 4th of July, and they're waking up because of some neighbor shooting off fireworks, that flyer is going to let them know that they have the, the right to call the police and make a complaint, and maybe something will get done about it. And that's why we want to see that flyer in, in with the water bills. The other thing I'd like to suggest is that you, we think twice about having fireworks legal during New Year's Eve. That is not an American tradition. The American New Year's tradition is to go out to dinner with your best girl, go to a party, or some other establishment, dance until midnight, then you count down till zero, you kiss your best lady, and then you sing Old Angzina.
I only have one lady, so I'll.
And she's your best lady ever.
Yes, she is.
You know? But fireworks has not been a part of our, for our New Year's Eve celebration. It doesn't go hand-in-hand with waiting for the big ball to fall down and singing Old Angzina. And considering some of the weather that we have in, on the New Year's Eve, that this isn't all that conducive. So, I'd like to, I'd like the, the city to really think about banning fireworks on New Year's Eve, and that's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is John Williams. I came down here today because.
Need your address, please.
1600 Block West 17th.
Okay, thank you.
I came home to find a surprise at my house today. Your company that you and Gil Holling got together and had do these trash cans, decided to bust up the wheels on the trash cans, and they left them laying all over the alleys, all over the parking. I couldn't even drive down to my garage. I had to get out and move six garbage cans just to get to my garage. I couldn't even drive down to my garage. I had to get out and move six garbage cans just to get to my garage. I called and filed a complaint with Gil Holling. They tell me, "You guys are in a thing with another company. There's nothing you can do." Well, who's going to pay for my truck wheel when I run over parts? Because they're literally leaving these parts lay all over. There's a big metal rod. There's plastic pieces. There's plastic wheels. I sat and picked them up and moved the cans just so I could get to my garage.
Did they leave the cans too?
Yeah, I got pictures. I can show you pictures on my phone. They left them laying in the alley. They just throw them.
I would tell you, I had, I've been talking with city staff extensively about this. It's been pretty frustrating. I had a friend that reached out to me with the exact same situation in her alley and had to get out, and she was cleaning up different parts. They are supposed to be married together, so to speak, and following one another where they tear them apart.
They told me they'd be there by seven tonight.
I was going to say, I know that they do come, well, a perfect example is I sent a text to city staff. I was going down my road, and it looked like they had just thrown them around and things.
Exactly what they're doing.
But then, within ten minutes, they were all, they were there being picked up. So I mean, I, I understand they're supposed to be following closely and not leaving those things. But sometimes it's certainly, I didn't see anyone there picking them up when I drove through, but.
I've, I've found them three blocks away putting out new cans.
I was going to say.
But nobody picking up old cans.
People are frustrated, and, and I understand that. We've been voicing those concerns, so.
Well, and that's, my phone going off was one of my neighbors. What the hell happened to the trash cans? You know? So, "Well, look out front. You got new cans on your parking." He puts his trash out back in the alley too. And they're, you know, they're not even putting the cans where the old cans are supposed to be.
They did that all down Rebecca, too.
It's alley pickup, and they put the new cans in the front.
And I know staff has been working.
Oh, and I don't care about taking the new cans to the back. That's no big deal. It's the fact that I couldn't drive down my alley, and I can show you pictures. None of the alleys in my neighborhood you can drive down.
Yeah, we believe you. I think the pickup.
This really has gone on long enough with these guys, Bob. I'm telling you, we're going to get an accident with a motorcycle driving. You can't leave this stuff late for seven or eight hours. Somebody's going to be in an accident. And we have been more than patient with these guys.
Well, my thing is, when you bust the wheels off, do like I did, throw them inside the can.
Right.
How hard is it standing up?
Sounds way too easy. I don't know why they can't do that stuff. But these guys got to get it together. I'm, I'm, I have had more of these calls than anything else.
You're going to have something run over a truck if it gets messed, and who's going to fix the car?
It gets old that they can't learn from their own mistakes, so.
And even when they pick up the wheels, they're leaving those black spacers.
I know. And that's what a motorcycle is going to hit, and we're going to be sued for that, so. We'll, we'll make sure.
Yeah, we understand.
If you guys can do something, my situation's done. I've already picked it up.
I know, but there's, there're.
All the neighbors around me are complaining.
Go out to the mall. They got a long ways to go before everybody gets a new can, so.
Sure. There's got to be a way they can look at doing something different.
I agree. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you, John.
Anybody else be heard? Anyone else be heard? Okay, we're going to go to council concerns. Mr. O'Kane.
I've got more than three minutes to talk about my guilty experience.
No, you don't, so.
But I'm going to save it for next week, when we have someone here to talk to. That's everything.
All right. Julie.
I had the pleasure of speaking to and presenting two proclamations to our Pride Alliance and our Pride Sucks Festivals downtown this weekend. Wonderful turnout. One was out in the heat, one was in the air conditioning, but I'll tell you.
That one was in the open air, the beautiful, fresh.
Yes, yes, but it was hot, very hot. Just a wonderful turnout. I just want to thank everybody who showed up for showing up. Appreciate it very much. Think about becoming an ally, and that was the emphasis of my speech, is be an ally to those who are not often heard. That's all I have. Great Friday.
Alex, hang up for one second, because my first comment was, I just wanted to address what you said. So I was hoping that you would stick around, and then I saw you getting up, and I was like, "Sorry, man, I gotta call you up." Apologize. I just wanted to share that, quite honestly, I was pretty frustrated over the last week. I, I had been contacted a number of times from friends of mine and people that I know. And every time, I felt like I was just telling them, "Look, this is not true. This is not accurate at all." And it was just so frustrating to me, like, that's, and I've shared that before with different issues in the city council. So this is not, you know, an anomaly, but I think misinformation spreads quickly, and then people get really upset. And you have to calm them down or try to tell them the correct thing, because I share your enthusiasm. Obviously, I'm not a climber. I have some, some, although you have adaptive equipment, so I mean, I might need it. I may come down sometime. But, but I would say, I understand what we have. I think it's an incredible asset. I think it needs to be utilized. You have my support of it being an asset that's utilized. It's just not cost-effective for the crowds that are coming, the way it currently stands. And so that's where I was open to creative measures that would allow individuals to continue to utilize it, or what could we do so that we could keep this amenity? A buddy of mine from Omaha, he, you can come up, but a buddy of mine from Omaha, he travels and does tournaments. And the first time he came to Sioux City, he was like, "Alex, you have no idea what you have." He was like, "This is an incredible space." He's like, and something that I go, he was like, "I go to big tournaments, and they don't have a wall about that great." So he was like, "Do everything you can." So I guess all that to say, I really hope that lessons were learned, that sometimes the way we go about things or the way we talk and tell people, like, that spreads like wildfire. Because quite honestly, I spoke with Matt today, and I was like, "I don't know how badly I want to work with, quite frankly, you or Whitewater," you know, if we're, if we're not on the same team. Because I want us to be on the same team.
Well, that's why I'm here.
And to tell you, Matt said it was great communicating with you this weekend. And, and think that we definitely can learn and be able to find, hopefully, a creative solution that works for all of us. So thank you for that. I just, yeah, it's just never fun. And I'm sure you were feeling like you were out of the loop and did go. And you go in, in defense mode, like, "I understand all those things." So I just, I'm glad that we're able to have the conversation now, so.
Yeah, I really, yeah, I mean, you guys don't know me, and that's kind of maybe an issue, you know? Like, as you said, this is an asset.
Exactly, yes.
And sometimes, especially when we're not talking face to face, things get majorly misconstrued.
Yes.
And then we form judgments and things. And yeah, sure, I probably went about it the wrong way, and I do sincerely apologize. But, you know, it was a reaction, and it was like, "Wow, this project that we love and I love."
And you poured your blood, sweat, and tears, and yeah.
And, and I, and I didn't have all the information, but I wasn't given it. So I just said, "We're closing." And then sometimes, you know, I can't control what other people do. But, you know, I could have composed and slowed down, so I do apologize.
Yeah.
But that's why I'm here today, and it's good to meet you guys. Poor circumstances on my end, I guess, but.
No, and, and I, I get that. And I think it's really big of you to come down and apologize. It's made society, and especially face to face, so I appreciate it very much. And your willingness to work through this, because I do, and Matt notes this, I've talked to him that way. But I do think it's a great amenity. We just, times are really tough in the city, so we have to make sure we're making good use of taxpayer dollars. So I hope you understand that, and that we want to think of creative solutions, too.
So just a quick other second. So the, the first creative solution that we had spoken about are this co-op situation. I do think that is more of a last ditch effort. I think this potentially sourcing our community and the interest there, I think that it's a great thought to, to, to try that first before we go to this co-op, because the co-op is not community. It's, it's, it literally would be a private utilization of the asset, which if it has to.
Which we wouldn't let happen. That was just the initial talks. We, the council wouldn't let that happen.
Sure, but that's kind of what, I mean.
I think there are conversations that will, like, what I've told staff is, I'm not a part of that community or that world. It doesn't make sense to me, so I trust experts.
Sure.
I trust our team. I trust our team to work with you and people that come together for us. So if, wherever it will end, I'm sure, as long as we can work together and find a solution that works for.
I agree. That's where I'm at, too. And, and as Matt said, I think it would really help if we could get a month's extension, so we have time to figure this out. I really don't think that it is even feasible to open on July 1st in some new forum.
And I, I think they're going to do, you know, I think they'll work with you on that. It sounded like they were open to that, so.
Sure. Well, I appreciate your time.
But I'm sorry to stop you.
No, no, I'm glad you did, because I was like, "Should we go? I don't know."
Nope, you're good. I just wanted you to know at least where I was coming from.
Thanks a lot. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
And it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all.
The second thing that I wanted to say, I, I, well, I would echo Julie. I attended the Pride Festival with her. It was great to see it so well-attended, and the energy was awesome. I wasn't able to stick around for all the events all night, but it was really, it was fun, and it was great to see it so well-attended. The second thing, or the next thing that I wanted to mention was, I was doing a tour of Station Six, actually up on Morningside Avenue, the fire department up there, and was talking with one of our firemen about, one of our firefighters about his service. And he was actually, I think, today, being deployed down to Davenport to assist with that, that effort. And so I just wanted to recognize that team, our urban search and rescue team that was deployed from Sioux City. I think that that's, that's a big deal, to step up and help your community. Not every community has one of those or has the ability to respond to these disasters. And so my, my thoughts are with them. I shared some photos on social of people that are linked out there to, to assist with that effort.
Are they home?
That's commendable.
You're talking about, I'm sorry.
Down in Davenport.
Yeah, are they home? Are, are?
I think we saw people there. They would have went, I think they went Friday.
Good. They left on Friday.
While Neil was, I think, like.
Just leaving, yeah.
I think switching today, there was a group.
Were they tag teaming and going back?
Some were coming back.
Right, right. But they did find the missing souls.
It's really scary to look at that building and think that our guys are in that.
They found the missing citizens, mm-hmm. So I don't think they'll have to go in much.
Perfect. The last thing that I wanted to mention, I sent an email to city staff, but I'm, or to council members, but I'm also going to reach out to all of our department heads. I was contacted last week about an opportunity to actually travel out to the White House. The White House is doing this building communities. Let me see if I can find the email. I forget the title quick, but I'll, I'll bring it out, and we're drafting a press release as well, where they're inviting people, elected officials or community activists from every state, switching off. And this next week is Iowa's turn to go out there. So they asked if I would be a representative and talk about some of the ways that federal programs have benefited and impacted our community. So we'll make sure we're going to put a press release together to let people know if they would like a comment. I'm asking city staff, some of our department heads, to come up with if they have anecdotal stories about how any of our federal dollars have really assisted us throughout our efforts. Especially, I was talking about the ARCA program and some of our, I think this is where you're not really going to do it. But there's a lot of other ones as well, so. Looking forward to the opportunity to head out there. I'll leave next Tuesday, so looking forward to it. Then that's all I have.
Moore?
Just a couple of things, Mayor and Council. The good news is, we have a lot of concerts in this community, and they're excellent concerts. And the Band Shell Concerts at Grandview Park have resumed, starting last night, 7:30 PM. And municipal band, just, it's a great, great concert. And we've got a lot more coming this summer, so that's the good news there. The other thing is, one of my favorites are the parades. Leeds Parade is this Friday evening, and I think most of it will be in it. And the reason, I'll tell you why I love parades, is because it really brings the community together. When the mayor and I were in the Morningside Days Parade, it was unbelievable, the turnout, that, that was, I mean, it was just, it was just unbelievable. It was all good. When it was you and I, we had leftover candy. Well, you told, you kept saying, "Pace yourself, pace yourself."
I challenged that. I challenged. Somebody just asked me the other day.
At home, I'll be bringing. Or I gave it back to Gabby, I think. Yeah, so the Leeds Parade's coming up. And then I just, locally for all of our students, I just want to congratulate them on the graduation ceremonies that were held. They were all excellent. I like the way they do that at Tyson, three graduation ceremonies, four actually, right? By is with West. And, and so, just, just excellent. And I'm, I'm just so pleased to see the number of students we have in this community and, and hope that they, when they go away to school or wherever they're doing, I hope they come back to make this their home. That's all I have, Mayor. My friend Jeff Hanson sent me a copy of the sign ordinance. I wasn't wrong. There is a time limit in there, as the city attorney can verify, so. I know most of you think I'm losing it, but I still got it a little bit together here. I went to the Asian Festival, and I'm not going to tell them how to run it, because it's very successful. But I hope we can work with them to maybe close a street or something. It was really crowded. They had such an unbelievable crowd. And I, I just don't know how they can grow that on the small lot that they have, if we can.
All on dummy blocks.
Yeah.
Well, and in the past, it's been Riverside Park.
What's that?
In the past, it's been at Riverside Park. This is the first.
Well, it's kind of cool to be in that neighborhood. I get it. But anyway.
Peggy can just request street closure pretty easily.
Yeah, but it was, it was really well-received. Not going to trash the climbing wall. I'm for the climbing walls. But, you know, we do once in a while have to put things in perspective. We give that climbing wall, for not a lot of people using it, more money than we give all the Little Leagues in Sioux City in soccer. So when I ask once in a while to, on a budget hearing, to raise the Little League's money, keep that in perspective about, well, how we spend our money around here. That's, I'm just going to say that and leave it at that. Next week, I might not be here. I'm going to hope to be, but I might be with my life changers t-shirt, because we've got eighty kids coming to town, going to paint and roof seven, and change a deck on seven houses. And we're doing it all over the community, so you'll, might see those kids out and about. So with that, I move adjourned.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Hey, Dan, what are you doing on the 14th? I might have you do that.